Hi, good evening. I'm going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of July 13th. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Donner if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, if you could take a roll tonight?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present except for Vice Chair Nelson.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments this evening for anything not on our agenda? Pardon? Oh, sorry, the minutes. Sorry, let's go back. And look at the meeting minutes from June 22nd, if there are any questions or comments or a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes as written.
A second. Right, call for a vote. All right, the meeting minutes are approved with Vice Chair Nelson absent this evening. So then, moving on to public comments, are there any comments for any item not on tonight's agenda?
No, Chair Opal.
Thank you. Okay, consent calendar, we have no items on the consent calendar for this evening. So, moving on to public hearing, item number two. Pardon me, the major antenna use permit request to allow light standard right-of-way installations of commercial wireless telecommunications antennas on San Diego gas and electric poles located within 100 feet of residential property lines at 27093 CS Calle Real and 34113 CS Camino El Molino.
Chair Opal, this item has been pulled by the applicant. I'm not sure if we have any members of the public that are present tonight to speak on this item. That's correct. So therefore, there's no action needed tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next item, which is also a public hearing, which is for coastal development permit, CDP 20-0004, to demolish an existing single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling and minor site development permit, SDP 20-006, 0006, for freestanding and retaining walls to exceed maximum height limits and a deck extension over a slope. And do we have a staff report this evening?
Yes, Danny Giometti would be writing a staff report tonight.
Good evening, Chair Opal, fellow commissioners. The project before you this evening is a request to demolish an existing single-family home and construct a new single-family home. The project also includes a request to construct retaining wall with freestanding walls located within the side front yards and a deck extension over the rear yard slope. So the lot is 23,042 square feet and it's located north of the intersection of Crown Valley Parkway and Pacific Coast Highway in the Monarch Bay Harris community. It's zoned as residential single-family four, RSF4, and is also within the city's coastal overlay district. The lot is bordered by single-family homes on all sides and also contains a significant slope, as you can see here, which is clearly over two-thirds of the lot. And it falls down to the bottom here at Mediterranean Drive. So existing site improvements include a 2,403-square-foot single-family home, single stories with an attached garage. There's also some site walls, some existing hardscaping, obviously some landscaping. And as you can see, and based on what I said in the previous slide, there is a significant rear downslope, which creates little to no patio yard space in the backyard there. So the proposal is to demolish the existing single-family home and construct a new 3,599-square-foot single-family home with an attached 717-square-foot oversized garage. As you can see, this is the footprint of both the garage and the house in yellow.
The home will have three bedrooms and four and a half bathrooms and an office. Because the project includes the demolition and construction of new single-family home within the coastal zone, a coastal development permit is required. So this is the floor plan. As you can see, the living areas are shown in yellow here. The garage is shown in orange up at the top right. You have this internal exterior courtyard, which is shown in green, and that forms the exterior walls, formed by the exterior walls of the home that surround it. And then, there's also this loggia and deck area that's an exterior part of the home as well. The front of the home includes two bedrooms and a street-facing bedroom and office up over here. And there's a common hall area that connects, that connects the bedrooms to the back of the home and this great room area, as you can see, between the courtyard and the, and the loggia and deck area. There's also a laundry and mudroom and a hall located between the master bedroom and the oversized detached garage located up here, which is shown in orange. And then, exterior improvements include, as I said, a covered loggia and a low wood deck along the top of the slope located back here. And there's also going to be a series of planter and retaining walls that are proposed on the property. This is the front and rear elevation of the home. The green line, as shown here on the top left and the bottom right here, it indicates the overall building height as measured from the garage pad elevation, which is the lowest existing grade, I'm sorry, the lowest finished pad. From the, from the lowest finished pad to the top of the green line there, which is the top of the highest roof ridge, the house stands at a height of 16.37 feet. With the chimney, as shown right here, this second, sorry, in this southern elevation here, the height of the chimney, from, sorry, from the top of the chimney to the, to the pad of the house is 21.33 feet. Both heights are well below the 26-foot maximum building height limit allowed for residential structures with a 3/12 pitch limit. There's also some flat roof elements off the front of the home, as you can see in the top left here. If this clicker is working. The, the flat roof elements are proposed at just over 12 feet in height and are located along the entry well below the 24-foot height maximum with a less than 3/12 pitch limit. So as you can see from the table on the screen, the project complies with all the applicable development standards, including yard setbacks, lot coverage, and height limit. This is a rendering or a sketch of what the, what the home will look like with the finished materials on the right-hand side, and this is a finished materials palette on the left-hand side. The exterior finishes resemble somewhat of like a Santa Barbara-style cottage architectural theme. The exterior walls will include a combination of smooth cement and adhered brick veneer. And the roof would be constructed of, constructed of a faux wood gray concrete tile roof. There'll be a copper rain gutter, obviously, that wraps around the perimeter of the home. And the openings will include anodized bronze, metal-clad windows and doors, and there'll also be a wood roll-up garage door, two of them. And then, there'll be dark anodized bronze light fixtures, chimney caps, and other accents along the face and the front and the back of the home. So as I said earlier, the application also proposes the installation of a series of concrete retaining and freestanding walls. The, there will be three concrete material, three concrete retaining walls exceeding 30 inches in height, and then, some garden/freestanding walls that are going to be shown in the blue here towards the front of the home, and those will be exceeding 42 inches. The tallest retaining wall, which is necessary to account for the grade change between properties located on the northern side of the property, side yard, is proposed to long, proposed to run from the back to the front of the home. And that wall ranges from less than a half foot to approximately six feet in height, with the highest portion being towards the front of the home at about six feet. And that'll be visible potentially from Caribbean Drive as you drive north. The other retaining wall located on the south end of the property is approximately, south side yard is approximately four and a half feet high, and it faces the, as I said, the southern neighbor, and it's visible from Caribbean Drive. And that's also proposed to run the length of the side yard, terminating at the back of the proposed home. There will also be a six-foot-high pilaster, which is shown in green on the retaining wall plan here, the grading plan. The six-foot-high pilaster will connect the side yard retaining wall to some of these front planter walls. That'll help to create a private path and entry to some open space in the front yard, which will help create a more usable footprint or more usable out yards or outdoor space that previously was not, was not there due to the large slope in the back. All the walls will be finished with a Santa Barbara-style cement plaster to match the facade of the exterior of the home. And they will also be proposed with some landscaping, drought-tolerant landscaping, which will mature to visually screen all walls. Lastly, the application proposes the construction of a low wood deck, which extends beyond the top of the, the rear downslope. The city's zoning code states that a lot contains, if a lot contains a slope which has a grade of 15% or greater, at-grade decks may extend a maximum of four feet horizontally beyond the top of a subjects, or of the slope, subject to the review of a minor site development permit. As you can see in this image here, in red, the proposed wood deck is an extension of the finished floor of the rear loggia in the backyard and extends 30 inches past the top of the existing slope. That slope has a grade of approximately 55%, so it's fairly steep. At the highest point, the deck surface will be approximately three feet above the existing grade of the slope, and it'll maintain a natural wood color, which will help blend into the proposed landscaping. And there also will be a variety of native and drought-tolerant landscaping that'll be planted at the base to visually screen the underbody of the deck and part of the guardrail. So staff finds the proposed project consistent with the basis of approval for both a coastal development permit and a minor site development permit. Based on the analysis, staff also determines that the project's consistent with the policies and provisions of the City of Dana Point General Plan, Dana Point Zoning Code, and the local coastal program. Additionally, the findings contained in the draft Planning Commission resolution supporting approval of the proposed entitlement request can be made. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CDP 20-0004 and SDP 20-0006 Minor, subject to the conditions contained in the attached draft resolution. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. I'm going to turn it over to my fellow commissioners now for any questions of staff. Commissioner McCann.
Thank you, Danny. There's no HOA in this community, correct?
There actually is a homeowners association in this community, and we've received an HOA approval for the project.
Okay, thank you. What, you showed us the retaining walls. What fencing is sitting on top of the retaining walls?
Are you referring to the retaining wall on the north or on the south end, or both?
Well, both.
Let me see here.
I'm wondering what the total wall height is going to look like, you know? If you have six-foot retaining, and then you put six-foot privacy on top of that.
Right, yeah, that could be pretty tall. We'll have to find out if the walls require a guardrail. Typically, if there's not a walkable surface above these retaining walls, then a, then a fence or a guardrail wouldn't be required, but that would be obviously a requirement from the building code. But I'll have to, I'll have to find out if, if they will be requiring a guardrail. Because that would extend the height an additional 42 inches.
Okay, is the architect here who can answer that question?
The architect cannot, cannot be here tonight. He had an emergency, so.
Okay, is the owner here? Maybe they could answer the question? You probably need to step up to the microphone and state your name and.
My name is Tim Wetzel. I'm the owner of the property. There is a wall there on that side of the house, but there is no wall above that, on top of where the retaining wall would be. So, there's no, like, wall here and then another wall here. There's the, the retaining wall would be all that's there.
So is there a fall risk then, if it's a six-foot, max six-foot high? What's to prevent someone from falling off of that and hurting themselves? Normally, you, if there's that height differential, there's some kind of a guardrail.
I, I think, I may be incorrect, there may be a 42-inch or something on top of that to keep that fall side. I, I don't recall specifically. I'm not much help for you on that point.
How, how about on?
Okay, so, here's our neighbor here, and they're saying, and she's looked at the plans, and she's saying there's a 42-inch proposed wall on top of what the retaining wall would be. But the slope differential is so large that we have to have the retaining wall there, and then there'll be another 42-inch, I guess you'd call it a retaining, um, fence to keep somebody from falling over. So it does answer your question.
Okay, so if it's six feet plus 42 inches, that's nine and a half feet total height in the highest location.
In the highest.
On the other side of the home, I think I heard it was four, it's a, I assume that's an uphill slope retaining wall?
The, the, on the downhill side to the south, it slopes down like that. And so there's proposed 42 inches along that southern side. And so that would be your, your wall to keep somebody from falling onto that side. So there's like 42 inches on the upper side and 42 inches on the lower side that would keep somebody from falling on either side of the retaining wall.
So on the upper side, the wall is four feet high along the entire length of the property line, correct? More or less?
Not all the way. Are you referring to the retaining wall or the wall that's the, the thing that's going to be on top of it?
I don't know. I mean, Danny, maybe we're lost in space here, but you showed a plan. Can you flash up the plan, please, with the retaining walls? Thank you. So Danny, if I'm not mistaken, the ball at the bottom of the screen, you said it goes from the back of the house towards the front of the house. It increases in height. And at the front, it's six feet tall retaining, correct?
Is the southern wall you're referring to or the northern wall? Sorry.
The bottom of the screen?
Well, there's no north arrow. I'm assuming the north arrow is to the top, so by the pilaster.
By the pilaster. So that wall is the height of four and a half feet. It's pretty, it's across that, that length.
Because there's a grade differential, these are stepped pads, so the one below it is obviously going to be a little bit, the house below it is going to be a little bit lower. And then the one on the north end, it goes from, like I said, about a half foot to a maximum of six. And yeah, if there's going to be a guardrail proposed on top or required by the building department, that's something that, you know, typically would be required at that point and.
Okay, but that's an uphill wall at the north side, so the pad is higher than this, than this home?
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, I had him confused. I thought that the six-foot wall was down, because you said it was a six-foot pilaster.
I think what you might be confused with is on the bottom one here, this, this wall, it's retaining a smaller amount than what obviously the one on the north end would be due to the stepping. But it's, it's more of a, like, property line or divider wall, more so.
Okay, so, but you guys haven't completely fleshed out guard railing required or not required and what material?
Correct, and that's something that typically, if the building department requires it, we're obligated to allow them to place a guardrail on top.
But they're explicitly not requesting, hey, this is six-foot retaining, plus I want a six-foot privacy wall on top?
Correct. It's not, it's not a request for an additional privacy wall. It would only be for a requirement to fulfill the building code safety requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner questions?
Danny, the, the lot shows only 20% coverage, so the landscape area goes from Caribbean Drive all the way down to the street below, but the house is just on a small portion of that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the, the plan, the existing plan shows retaining, retaining walls out front now on this, the one that you're showing, on the upper-left side of the picture?
There's an existing retaining wall along the right-hand side, and then, yeah, property line or courtyard walls in the front.
Yeah, so the, the new plan is, is going to have a similar layout of that, correct?
Somewhat similar. If you take a look at this sketch, there's some planter walls and a lower entry that kind of creates a private courtyard. They're not going to be as tall. There will be some plants that are planted behind them that will mature and grow a little bit higher, but no, the request is not for something that, that tall. It's not for a six-foot, six-foot tall wall in the front, which is what this one looks like, or what the existing home looks like.
Thank you.
Commissioner Murphy, do you have any questions of staff?
All right, Danny, I just have some clarifications. It's mostly, you know, nothing technical with respect to the plans, but just some questions in the resolution itself. On page four, item two, it says that the site is suitable of the site for the proposed use and development. Is that correct? The site is suitable of the site?
What page are you referring to? Can you repeat that?
So it's of the resolution, it's page four, down on item number two, halfway down in the center. Should it just be that the site is suitable for the proposed use and development?
Yeah, I believe that that might be an error. That's one of the, obviously, the required findings. The wording and the findings can be a little bit confusing at times, so that might be a, that might be an error on that, on there. I know it does, it, it doesn't say that the site is suitable for the proposed use and development. I'd have to double-check what that.
Okay. All right, and then, on page eight, at the bottom, on A17 and 18, I don't know, this may be just changed language, but it talks about the Director of Public Works, the Public Works Department, and then it talks about Public Works and Engineering Services. Is that correct, or is it all just Public Works?
Which condition was that?
So, bottom of page eight, A18, basically. So 17 says Director of Public Works, Public Works Department, and then 18 talks about Public Works and Engineering Services.
Yeah, it's just referred to differently. That's something that, that, that would need to be corrected so that it reflected the same department. They're both the same department.
And then the last question I have is on page 10, number 23. It says fire department review may be required. How is it determined if fire department review is, is required?
Well, that's a case-by-case basis. It's really dependent on if the lot is either in like a high severity, like high-fire severity zone, or if there's multiple units on site. This particular project was, was, was submitted to OCFA for preliminary review due to the fact that it's in a high-fire severity zone, fuel mod zone. And that typically, for something like this, would limit to the types of plants that can be planted in the, on the slope, and that certain natives are either left there or, you know, replaced so that they're, they don't create a higher-fire severity issue.
I, I just wanted to make sure they weren't in for surprises that it may be required later, and, but it looks like they've already gone there, so I'm good. Thank you. So I will open it up for a public hearing.
Chairwoman, I have another question. Danny, to, to propose this and get to this stage, they've already done a preliminary geotechnical report, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so now I will open it up for a public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
No, Chair Opal.
All right, so we will close the public hearing and move it to Commissioner's discussion. Commissioner McCann?
I think this is a great-looking project and very well-designed. And I think it's suitable and appropriate in its location. I agree with the findings in the proposed resolution. I would like to kind of modify or insert a condition that if any guard railing is required on the retaining walls, that it be some type of a, I don't want to say invisible, but low visual impact material. I don't want to dictate to them whether it's glass or, or, you know, stainless steel rail, you know, railings or wires or cables or whatever. But that, so that way, we just don't end up with a 10-foot-high wall. So at the appropriate time, I'd be happy to make a motion to that effect. But I'm in support of the project.
Commissioner Donner?
I also agree with Commissioner McCann. I think it's an excellent project. It's well-designed. It's going to be an improvement to the community. And I, I also support the, the side wall, the retaining wall to make sure we don't create a visual, a large standing wall, if we can avoid that. I think it meets all the general development standards, and, and I think it's, it's something that will, will be, be a major improvement to Dana Point. Thanks.
Commissioner Murphy, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I drove around that area today, spent a lot of time driving around and looking at the different neighborhoods within the neighborhood. And certainly, what has been proposed here fits right in and still is unique. And could, and I would have, I think it's a great start.
Thank you. I too am very supportive of the project. It meets all of the requirements, checks all the boxes. I am supportive of Commissioner McCann's recommendation if a guardrail is required on top of the wall, that it be not a solid wall, that it be some type of an open structure. So with that, I will request a call for a motion.
I move that we approve coastal development permit, CDP 20-0004, to demolish an existing single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling and minor site development permit, SDP 20-0006M, for freestanding and retaining walls to exceed maximum slope heights and a deck extension over the slope with the added requirement that a limited visibility wall, if an extension is required on the retaining walls.
Is that adequately worded for, for staff?
Yes, it is. And also, we may also include the edits that Chair Opal mentioned related to finding C2 and condition 18.
I'll second with those edits and amendments.
Right, so call for a vote. Sorry, it's, it doesn't, it's popping up on the screen. So that passes, so congratulations. Look forward to seeing that when it's done. Good luck on that. Moving on to old business, we have no old business this evening. We have no new business this evening either. So moving on to staff reports.
Our next Planning Commission meeting of July 27th, we have no items, so that meeting will be canceled. So we'll see you in August.
All right, do we have any commissioner comments this evening?
Before commissioner comments, I have a question. I'm just wondering about how the application flow and workflow has been to planning and community development recently. Have there been a lot of new applications, a surge, a decline? What are you guys seeing and experiencing?
On the building permit side, we still are being, are very active. You know, there's a lot of construction still happening in our community. On discretionary permit side, I think there has been a little slowdown. We have some large projects that are keeping us busy, but some of the smaller applications, I think, have, have, have been slowed down a little bit.
Okay, thanks. Are you guys mostly working in the office or remotely, or half and half? How's that working?
Staff is currently in the office, and we are open to the. Staff is currently in the office, and we are open to the public in the mornings from eight to noon, and, and by appointments in the afternoon.
Okay, great, thank you. And I just want to comment again, you know, what a privilege it is for all of us to live in Dana Point, it's so unbelievably beautiful, we've had so many great days, we've had great surf and great weather, and it's just a privilege to be here, and it's a privilege to serve the community.
My only comment is I, I miss the, going out to dinner in Dana Point, and, and if you're going to be quarantined someplace, looking at the ocean and walking in it is, it's a pretty, pretty great place to be quarantined.
I would concur with that, I live, I, I live very close to the ocean, so I'm getting a real bird's eye view of what's going on down there. It's, it's an interesting procedure down there with all the campers coming in and, yeah, it's good, good for Dana Point.
So I concur with my fellow commissioners, it's not a bad place to work from home, I'm working there until sometime in August, maybe longer. Only downside is the sound of the traffic on Pacific Coast Highway on Zoom meetings, it gets a little loud with motorcycles sometimes, but we get through it. So with that, I will adjourn until our next meeting.
Thank you.